Apologies, we were just dealing with some technical issues again. And somebody I think, yep. So with that, I'm sorry, we're starting a little bit late, but now I think we're ready. So I would like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, February 26th. Please all rise with the pleasure of the agents.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for your patience. I know we have a very packed agenda tonight. But so I'm going to waive my first selectwoman's comments, but I would like to make a motion to open up the agenda to add three new items, including a resolution regarding police staffing, an item concerning the awarding of builder's risk policy for the new school project, and to amend the consent agenda. So can I get a second to open up the agenda?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, great. So now what I'd like to do is make a motion to add the following items to the agenda. Add item 3B, which is discuss and take action to approve resolution regarding staffing for the Madison Police Department. And add item 3C, discuss and take action to approve awarding a builder's risk insurance policy for the new elementary school project on Muggertown Road to Gilbane Construction in the amount of $162,461, and to authorize the first selectman to sign all necessary documents, contracts associated with this award, and to amend, thirdly, amend item 6E of the consent agenda to include approval of disposition of two police vehicles no longer in service per disposition of town property policy.
So moved.
Second. Okay, great. Any discussion about adding this to the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so now we've added these items to the agenda. So now I'd like, moving on to, we're still on item three, I'd like to move on to item 3B and make a motion to discuss and take action to approve the following resolution regarding staffing for the Madison Police Department. So I'd like to read this resolution, and then the board can discuss it and kind of the thinking behind it. Whereas the Board of Selectmen is committed to providing a safe community for all its residents and recognizes recent criminal activities in our town are alarming and require action. And whereas the Board of Selectmen has supported the efforts of the Madison Police Department to address public safety concerns and meet departmental requests through many different[165.60][165.61]initiatives. These include the previous funding of two new police officers in the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget, offering enhanced compensation through a new collective bargaining agreement in 2023 to attract and retrain officers, upgrading the police vehicle fleet, purchasing advanced speed tracking monitors, upgrading the police locker room facilities, and most recently funding new camera and license plate reader technology. And whereas the Board of Selectmen supports the Board of Police Commissioners and the MPD's goal of steadily expanding the number of patrol officers over the next few years to address rising criminal activity on the shoreline and meet the concerns of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen remains committed to providing the MPD with necessary resources by including in its recommended fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, the hiring and training of three new police officers in 2024 to fill existing vacancies, the additional hiring of one new police officer in January 2025, and recommends the inclusion of a second new police officer in the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget.
Second that.
Yep. Okay, so with that, for discussion, I know that we've gotten a lot of comments from the community with concerns about police staffing. I know the chief has spoken to us many times about trying to incrementally add police officers over the next few years to get our, you know, the department up to staffing levels that's going to be appropriate for the town. And I think there's just been some confusion around timing of this, and I think the discussion has been to do this incrementally, and that's what this board is supporting in our budget. So I just wanted, I thought it would be good, and I know Bruce had reached out to me about this, we want to do addresses and make sure people understand that we're still committed to adding officers and are very supportive of the department. So if any other board members would like to comment?
No, I mean, just absolutely, public safety, I think, is paramount for all of us. And when Chief Drong presented his budget, and we had zero pushback from board members on any of the requests that he put forward in his budget, and, you know, we're recommending them all, you know, and he included the piece that he would be hiring or looking to hire a new officer, a second new officer in next year's budget. And, you know, again, we were all, you know, seemingly supportive of that. So I think we're moving in the right direction.
You know, I think, you know, we heard the presentation, and the backend loading of a police officer is a little unusual. The January request for a new hire like that is more in line because the budget goes in place, and then he, or the department head can go and recruit and hire during the fiscal year. And as Peggy and I talked about this, we realized that it was a good thing to signal our support publicly so that the police commission and the police chief could begin their recruiting process with some certainty that they had our support for that ad that he mentioned in his presentation. So this is a way of just giving them the assurance they go out in good faith and look for that new recruit to start as early in the year as possible. And certainly, we appreciate the challenge that the chief has, that every police department has these days in recruiting good candidates and keeping them so, wishing the best of luck on the openings he's got. And hopefully, we'll be talking about, you know, four recent onboards and a new one to come.
And I think that is the challenge and why we're trying to be practical about hiring on timing, is it's really hard to hire police officers right now, and when you do, you have to go through a lot of, especially if they're people who are new into police services. So they have to go through extensive training. So we're trying to be realistic about what the department can absorb and what we, how successful we're going to be in terms of actually meeting our, you know, recruitment goals, so.
I think we all understand how important feeling safe is to members of our community. And frankly, I can't think of any town department where we have recently directed more additional resources than the police department.
I think that's right. Yeah, I think that's right. I think, you know, at the end of the day, I think me as a Board of Selectmen, by this resolution, by our actions in the past, are very serious about safety and the community recommendations, the sentiment of the community. Listen, this is a, this is a statewide issue that's going on right now. This is not necessarily something that's unique to Madison, but we're being proactive. We're taking it seriously, and we're dealing with the recommendations of our police department. I mean, in fairness, the police department asked for, in the budget, one additional officer through the additional budget request. So we acted accordingly. I think we're now taking an additional signal based on some of the community input to really, to take an extra step and lead here, and I think that's important.
May, we're just confirming what we've already talked about. We are supportive of that, too. The chief wants to get to 32 officers. We're 30 now, and the pathway is there to get to 32 officers. So any other comments or from the board on this? And then, so with that, then again, all in favor of the resolution of the Madison Board of Selectmen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Well, great. And we'll submit this to the Board of Finance, as they will be deliberating themselves on the budget and can take this into consideration. The other item then is item 3C, which we added to the agenda, and I'll just quickly go through this. I'd like to make a motion to discuss and take action to approve awarding a builder's risk insurance policy for the new elementary school project on Muggertown Road to Gilbane Construction in the amount of $162,461, and to authorize the first selectman to sign all necessary associated contracts and documents associated with this.
So moved.
Second. Okay, great. And basically, this, I don't know if Deb, Deborah's on.
She is.
Okay, great. Maybe she can just give you a quick overview. This kind of came about quickly because they were not getting a lot of responses for bidders. So can you, Deborah, are you on?
Yeah.
Oh, there, okay, great. Go ahead, Deborah, you can unmute yourself.
Oops, okay, I'm here.
Yep.
Um, yes, we were having trouble getting quotes for the builder's risk insurance for the new elementary school. We did get the one from Gilbane, and then we had a hard time getting a second one. The second one just came in on Friday, and the levels of insurance for each of the different coverage topics are not as good or as high as Gilbane. And as such, we would have to go out and get a supplemental policy to cover toward the builder's risk insurance if we do not go with Gilbane.
And I think the hope had been that we would have this, we did all the policies on Wednesday, but they just hadn't gotten the responses yet. Colliers is recommending that we move forward with this policy, and we just need to get it in place so they can start working. So, so are there any additional questions on this?
Deborah, this is Dale. Who do we look to for advice on what the correct policy limits are for these policies?
We used our insurance broker, which is Dan Anderson through HD Seager. And he was the one that has looked over all of these quotes to make sure that the town is covered.
Thank you, Deb.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of approving item 3C, say aye.
Aye.
Great, all right, thank you. Appreciate that, guys. And then I think the final thing.
Returns.
No, 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 no. Wait, do I do this now? To, yeah, I just, yeah, I can do it, yeah. So I just want to, uh, meet to item six and make a motion to amend the consent agenda? Or I already added that later?
We already did that.
Yeah, so we just voted on the consent agenda. That's right, good. Lost track of the thought here. Okay, thank you with that. Okay, so moving on, are there any liaison reports or selectman comments, understanding that we've got quite a packed agenda tonight, so. No?
Okay.
Okay, all right. So we will move on to citizens' comments. We'll dedicate a few minutes to this because I know we have a number of people here looking to speak and give presentations, several groups tonight, so it's a pretty packed agenda. But we'll open it up. Are there any hands here, any citizen comments in the room? Okay, oh, yes, of course.
Hi, and I just want, I'm Henry Griggs, I live on Warped Street. And I just wanted to come in person to thank you all for giving me the privilege, the honor of serving as your municipal historian. Two sentences, the big picture in my view, is to get all the groups to work together. And one way I do that is to serve on all their boards simultaneously, so. I know, a button for punishment. And I'd like to announce that we have one citizen in town who has received a homeowner's tax credit that will cut, has covered 30% of the cost of painting her storehouse on the post road. So I'd like to see many more of those. There are about 100 properties in town that qualify, so that's.
Number one. That's great.
Yeah.
Only 99 to go.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We're grateful we can reappoint you and the consent agenda. So I know we have some hands raised, so Jeannie, we'll take a few comments from the public, and just please keep your, state your name, address, and just brief remarks, because we'll have to go through this pretty quickly tonight. So go ahead.
Hi, it's Jim Forense, 47 Seaview. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
I just want to thank the Board of Selectmen for the strong statement that was just made and the resolution that was passed and supported public safety. Obviously, there's been a lot of us that have been talking to various town officials about this topic for a couple of years. This is a major step in the right direction. It's a very positive statement. We all confront this issue as citizens of our town, so it's very important to all of us, including all the people in the room and all the people that might be here via Zoom. So I just want to express my gratitude. There's still more work to do, I think, for all of us, but this is a significant step, and it's very positive. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Another hand raised?
Hi, Jim.
Hi. Hi.
Hi, state your name and address, please, for the record.
It's Jim Schmalz from Jonathan's Landing. And I had gone over, had a chance to go through the carbon point again over the weekend, and had a couple of concerns on it. I talked to Scott about it earlier today and sent him some info. But the concerns were the seating being concrete, if they were doing anything special to keep that from heating up. I'll just run through the concerns, and you can talk about it after. And then the way the decking looks like it's done, if there was any drainage planned for it, or any way to keep it from filling up over the winter and icing over. It didn't look like there was a big space there or any way for it to effectively drain out. And then there was a concern about if we were going to have to have railings along the seawall now, which is, you know, would fall under a zoning question, but it wasn't in the presentation, so. Wasn't sure on that one. And then the big concern I had was, since the seawall is being raised and the elevations are being raised, you have a seat wall that people can sit on, and then a higher berm with grasses that's going to encroach the sightline as people are sitting at the picnic tables, because it's coming up about 40 something inches, which is eye level of where that's going to be. And I didn't know if that was considered or addressed earlier on somewhere. And that's, that's what I had for you.
Okay, great. Those are interesting comments. I think it's later on the agenda that we talk about those, and certainly we can try to get answers from the consultants for some of those. But I know, pretty confident that there's reasonable responses to each of those issues. So thank you for raising those. I think we've got one more hand raised, and then I think we should probably move on to our meeting, so.
Hello?
Yes, please, Andrea, state your name.
Yes, Mastoloni, 36 Concord Drive. I have a couple things to say, and I think as a female, a woman, a mother of daughters and children in this town and state, I really do appreciate you guys addressing the public safety concern. But I think we need to do a better job of making it more transparent to the community and, you know, not just where your keys in the car, lock it, or we need to know what's happening. There are so, we cannot trust, I'm not going to go like into the media situation, but we can't trust them to tell us where, why, where the person was from. We know we have a border issue through the United States of America, and we know it's settling into all of our little New England towns. I won't go to Branford Walmart anymore. I'm starting to feel like trapped within my own state and like afraid to go to certain places. I know there are many more like me. We depend on you guys really to bring this to the forefront and tell us what is happening. And I would just ask for you to be a little more thoughtful in, while I know you're trying, think about what it really does to your citizens when they're so afraid. And, you know, this weekend was lovely in our town, and it was like Pleasantville running down our main street, but that's not every day. And just asking you to consider a little more about how we feel in this town. We have one of the biggest state parks. We deal with a lot of additional citizens in the summer, and it can be scary for us. And that's not racist. That's, I'm afraid, just saying those words. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your comment. So I think with that, we will post public comment now and move on to, I think it was number six, which is the consent agenda. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended consent agenda as presented to the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now, we have a patient group here. I want to welcome up the, I guess, the board members from the ABC House to give a presentation about the ABC House, the history and the history of Madison. So welcome Kevin Pransler and some of your other board members to come up. Is this going to be a PowerPoint presentation, just going to talk?
I do have one, yeah. Yeah, so we're going to do a brief introduction of who's here, and then, I want to be very careful. First of all, I want to, before we begin, I want to thank the Board, let's thank the Board of Selectmen, mine, the Board of Selectmen and women. Thank you for your time, I really do appreciate it. We're going to be, want to be very brief. Really, what the intent of today is, is really more of an informational outreach to the board, and to help give our community, the broader community, a better understanding about what our program is, who we are, what we do, and really just really begin a dialogue and really continue a dialogue that had begun 52 years ago when our program first was established. So with that, that's going to go down the line here. You guys can introduce yourselves, so.
Hi, I'm Tom Corboto, Vice President, and I'm a former president of these.
Chris McSweeney, I'm head of Scholar Affairs.
Chris Ryan, I am the HR Board Member.
I'm Katie Petla, I'm one of the Scholar Selection co-chairs. Bill's here, President.
I'm a former president of the Board and a current member of the Innovation Committee for the building, for the House.
So we thank you for your time. So we're going to be incredibly brief, so I'm going to kick it to Kate, who's just going to share a brief presentation.
I got to make a.
I'm thinking if you're going to talk to it, do you mind if I put the podium over here, because it's easier for the camera.
Yeah, sure.
And then they can run it that way. You can look at that screen and, you know, it's, it's. So, and that'll just make it a little easier for.
We have a short, will this play the volume in here?
We'll figure that out, and I got three slides to go. Yeah, I don't know about how that works with audio on.
If it doesn't work, we don't need to show it.
You can set it out later.
Yeah, it's because you're sharing, right? Your screen sharing.
Yeah. Of course. Okay, okay. Okay, so to just give you a little background, and Tom, you're going to jump in, I need help with the history of it. But beginning in 1963, A Better Chance was formed nationally. It was a, it was a national program designed right around the civil rights movement to give young men and women of color better opportunities to attend high school, specifically somewhere different than their own town, to give them literally a better chance, ABC. So we've been in operation for 52 years in Madison. So really, right after this started, Madison jumped on board with Priscilla McGinnis.
McManus.
McManus, sorry. 54 years, this is the 54th year. I came when it was 52, you're right, I've been doing this for years. So through a lot of work, with a lot of people in this town, in a little bit of a crazy time, A Better Chance was established here, and the house is called the Robie House, it's on the corner of Durham and Green Hill. So we, there are only 18 ABC houses left in the United States, but most of them concentrated in the Northeast, and there are several in Connecticut. Guilford has a girl's house, but there's other boys' houses, so. There we go. Oh, God, of course. I can't see it, but you guys can. Okay, so our, our program is called the Community School Program, the CSP, because we, our kids live, we call them our scholars, they live in the home, the Robie House, but they attend a public high school. So we're not a boarding school, but we're in competition with those boarding schools, with Choke, with Loomis, with Hatchkes, Salisbury, all of them. So that, that's who we're up against right now, because we're a unicorn, kind of. I think people are wowed by the private schools, you know, when they walk onto campus, you can't help but feel important. But we are very biased in thinking that a community school program is really the way to go. The children are still treated as children with layers and layers of support to transition them, we think, perfectly to college. I, is this going?
It's the time.
I can't, look, I can't see it on my computer, so I don't know what.
I have that problem, too, when you screen share sometimes, it doesn't. So maybe unshare and then pull it back up. Is there like an arrow on here?
If I wasn't a teacher, I'd be dying right now, embarrassed, if this wasn't.
Can you?
Yeah, take it.
Can you unshare it, though?
I can talk maybe a little bit, just kind of help, just give you guys a sense of who we are, and thank you, Kate.
Yeah, exactly, keep going, I'll just.
It's a wonderful presentation setup, and it's really geared towards our scholar selection process. We wanted to kind of gear it a little bit more towards, just to kind of get a sense of who we are. So a couple of things I wanted to share today is really stress the importance of our program to the community. 50-plus years within Madison, and one of the things that I've learned, so that's my third year as Board President, fourth year as a member of the program, are the relationships that have been established over these past 50 years. I think Bruce had mentioned that, you know, he remembers, you know, when he was in school, the ABC program, so.
Not quite 60 years, no.
Yeah. But the point being is that we have been as much a part of this community as I think you can make an argument of any organization in town.
So that's probably what's causing the problem, because I know we've had that happen before in the video, is that that.
I didn't try to play it yet?
No, but even then, I think having it in it, so we can see if it works, but that might be why it's kind of, because I remember that happening.
Thanks, for my lifeline, Kevin, will you try to play the video?
It's a great environment. Madison ABC scholars are selected from schools in the Northeast that are associated with the program. Those students are able to come here to interview and have a class for that pursuit of being a student.
That's really a recruitment. Hope that you're capable. I am, but I'm kidding. Dear Jesus, this is a nightmare. We use that video, we use that video to recruit or show our scholars, to show them all the sides of it. So did you want to say something? You're 15.
No, no, you can do, no, I'm just here, I'm here for moral support.
Someone a calendar here. So we play on the ABC, right? A is our achievement. We are really proud of what we can get or what the students achieve, but with layers of support. So it's up there, you can see what we offer the kids, but they, part of their scholarship value includes tutors that are paid for. SAT tutoring, ACT tutoring, advisors at the school, academic advisors, as well as their guidance counselors. College, professional college planning by a professional college planner, but it's, it's for free to the scholars. It's part, it's part of their package. So that gets our, our kids to go to school. Their all family's got accepted a Vassar or senior, has a number one choice, and he'll be fencing there.
Wow, that's awesome.
So we really pride ourselves on getting these kids to their fullest potential, but they work for it. You know, they work super hard. The B is brotherhood and family. We can have up to six scholars in the house right now, and there's five. Two resident staff, Adriana and Trey are young adults themselves, young professionals, but they are the parents in the home 24/7. To five teenage boys ages 14 to 17. There's a chef that comes six, five nights a week to cook for the boys, real healthy meals. We have a mentoringship program, we do home activities together, there's pictures there, theme nights. It's really, Adriana and Trey have really, really prided themselves on it being a family. They call the van the family car when they go somewhere, so. And then the C is for community, you know, the kids have school friends, they have them over the house, they have fire pit nights, they're involved in fundraisers that they plan. That basketball tournament we had, that thank you for helping us with it, it was a huge success, it's getting bigger and better. They volunteer at their co-op every year, they're involved with their host families. So they, they really are a part of this community, and they have it for over 50 years. And we really want them to know the community better and the community to know them better too. That's why we're reaching out a little bit. So our plug for a CSP, because we realize we lose kids to private schools every year, to places like Chalk and Loomis. But we really believe our model is the best, because we can deliver such a personalized experience for these boys as they age and mature from eighth grade to a senior in high school, when they're ready to go out. You know, they're one of six, not one of 600 in a boarding school, or one of the freshman class of 600 somewhere else. So, you know, they get what we call a scholarship, because they do get, they get their per people price paid for, all the operating costs of the houses considering then their, their meals, their fees for sporting events, I mean, for teams are paid for. So they are, you know, layers of support. So when you look at that, well, I'm just going to put the list of names up there, and I'm sure you realize, our executive board is mostly here, Stephanie's not here, Neil is not here. But this is our board, and these are all the areas that need to be addressed for free by the board for people that have full-time jobs, you know, and then dedicate themselves to those causes too. Because it's not just housing five boys in a house and sending them off to their teachers. It is politicizing our stuff, getting gifts, you know, recruiting memberships, taking care of the building and grounds, putting the wifi in the house, getting computers for them, finding host families.
Making video.
Making the video play. Where's my IT guy?
What I want to say about that video, which is important to mention, that was actually created by one of our scholars.
This album, right? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we have to have enrichment activities for them to do the college planning. So it, it's layers and layers deep of people that give selflessly to these boys. The area goes, we have members at large, Bill's here. And then we also have a giant advisory board. So these people we look to for their expertise, we have people within the school system, there's coaches, there's medical professionals. So we use them as advisories, you know, when we need help and need advice, and they're there to offer us their time too. So there's a lot of people dedicated to these boys and their success, and we're super proud of it, and we just need it, we want it to continue. Act Two Thrift Shop donates most of their proceeds, right? I don't know exactly how much. 100% of them, okay, to the ABC House. And Priscilla started that also, I believe, and still does it.
I want to mention something about Priscilla real quick, because Priscilla McManus is one of the most incredible citizens of this town's head. She's been incredibly selfless, whether it's with Act Two, which is also a nonprofit, which has been supporting our operating budget for, for as long as Act Two.
20 years.
20 years.
It's the 20th year.
Yeah. So, and she's also one of the founders along with Lyndley Ludwig. So two tremendous women who came on the heels of the civil rights movement and really made an impact in this town. So the way we're looking at it today is that they really took this ball 50 years. And now that, now we're kind of moving towards the next 50 years of this organization. And to kick off that 50 year, which timing slightly off, but we're pretty close, we're kicking off a half a million dollar investment renovation inside the home. So the house you saw today is not going to be the house you're going to see in the fall. And this is another reason why we're reaching out to you, to you folks, in that just letting you know that we are, you know, we can, we intend to continue and remain relevant in town, investing our own funds, which is 100% driven by volunteers. All proceeds with ABC go directly back into the program. And I don't, I can go on and on, but what I'd like to do, and I want to respect your time, because we do have a couple advisory members on the board with Peggy and Al. So I'd like to just open up the questions about our programs, that'd be a better way for you guys to get a feel we're in the community for who we are. But we're really appreciative of the time today, and really appreciative of the community for supporting our organization for over 50 years. Thank you so much. Okay. Do you have any questions? We have members that are happy to answer anything.
Well, I, I want, first of all, I just want to thank you for the presentation. My involvement has been more just attending the annual meetings and learning about it, because it's something I wasn't familiar with until I got into this office. But I know Kevin, you and I had gotten together with Scott and kind of brainstormed that, how can we continue to support this initiative? There's a transition going on within the organization and make sure that we can sustain this for the future. So there's a lot of different things we talked about, how the town can help, how the community can help, and we want to continue that dialogue. Come up with some real, you know, focused ways that we can provide assistance.
If I could say, Peggy, I think it's important that, you know, I know diversity is a buzzword that people like to talk about, and certainly we support diversity within our program, again, the obvious. But we, to us, it's much more personal, these are young men, and they're walking day to day, you know, with, you know, with that understanding of, you know, talking about a unicorn, being a unicorn in the town of Madison. And that's why it's so critically important we have the layers of support. Even with all of our layers, it's still not a guarantee of success. And that's why, I think, more than ever, we're talking with you folks today, and that really trying to put ABC back on the map as far as awareness in this community. You know, we're always looking for volunteers, we're always looking for benefactors, anybody who really sees the value of this program, which I think is really, I don't think it's priceless, you really couldn't put a number on it. And, you know, it's, it is so personal to all of us, especially given the fact that we have relationships with the boys. And again, just want to thank you for your time, and any questions you may have, and ways you can help us, you know, our ears are open.
If I could just jump in briefly, you know, the name in there, it's a Better Chance, and it's an opportunity for these young men to get, you know, we're, we're all blessed to live in this great town, and our kids are blessed to grow up in this town, and a lot of people don't have those same, those same opportunities. And so on the one hand, it's an opportunity for these kids who are coming from difficult situations. But on the flip side, these kids give so much to our own kids. You know, we're, we live in a town that's very similar, everybody's the same. These kids come from a very, very different background, and so our kids get to experience what they've seen through their eyes, which they might not otherwise get if we didn't have this program. So while it's an opportunity to give a chance to these kids, they bring so much to the community. And for 52 years, or 54 years, the community has supported this program. I mean, there, there are, if you, if you talk to any host families that did it in the 70s or the 80s or the 90s, these kids are still part of the family. These kids are still coming to the, to the weddings and the graduations and Christmas and Hanukkah and whatever else happens. The relationships, I mean, that's really the key to this organization, is the relationships it develops. And it bridges gaps that wouldn't be bridged but for the opportunity that this organization provides, not only to the kids, but to the town as a whole. So there's, there's so much give and take, and so much positive flowing in every direction, that it's something that, as a community, I, I would, when I was president, I would always say that I'm so proud that we live in a community that allows this organization to happen. And I feel that way today, because again, we benefit from it as much as the kids do. So I just wanted to point that out.
I'm just going to say quickly, I remember first learning about ABC House through the newcomers club when I moved here, and then same with Act Two Thrift Shop. So I don't know if you guys still give presentations to the newcomers club, but I definitely recommend it. It's something, yeah. And the other question I have is, as families in town move up into the high school age system, how do they find out about becoming host families?
Yeah, we do that literally through just word of mouth and just, you know, it typically, we would love for it to be a boy, an eighth grade boy, and his family, so that they are just more comfortable with, because the house is all boys.
Right.
So our numbers are low. I mean, when you, when you take a class that has 180 kids and half of them are boys, and, you know, say 80 kids and 80 families that we can work with, there's not that many, you know, so it's a lot of word of mouth, it's a lot of trying to talk to the principals to see if they can send out like a backpack express or just, you know, that we are recruiting, we, we want families, we want to talk to them about the program and just see, you know, who, who'd be interested in. And we typically love a four-year commitment, but we know that that's not always the case for, for some families.
Do you ever go to the meetings for the kids that's there in eighth grade and getting ready to go into high school, when they have the family meeting?
So we, I, I work in the middle school, and Missy Hartman, my co-chair, also does. So we are starting to be better at that. So we have a list of eighth grade families, we've gone to Catherine Hart, she's given us permission to contact them, you know, and through Backpack Express. So it's gotten a little more formalized, only Chrissy in the past like day, that's why you didn't know that. That's why Missy has the list, right? And Kim Shorty is our host family person, so she is the person in charge of finding host families and vetting them and getting them to meet the families and pairing them up. But so Kim's working with Missy on that, but it's, it just really just got way more streamlined in the past day with Catherine's agreement that we can approach the families now.
Yeah.
And so, yeah.
I can add that and also make Jenny a little more about it, is that the pandemic really put our program, you know, stopped everything cold for a couple of years. And so we're now at this point where, you know, advancing the home renovation and really trying to expand our profile in town to make sure we are reaching out to the right, you know, program schools to ensure that, that we are, you know, getting those volunteers. So we're really at that, really kind of that second phase now, really trying to re, again, reintroduce who we are and make those relationships. Because the last three, you know, this pandemic really kind of, a lot of valves got shut down, and so really kind of rebuilding it and driving for the future.
And so it just even, you know, I myself today didn't know about the program until my own kids got into the high school, you know? So our goal is to, you know, let families know with, with little kids that, that there's, you know, there's so many opportunities to mentor or just, you know, give a ride to one of the boys to practice or whatever, if there's a mom that's going there. So we just want to, more exposure to the house for, you know, kids of all ages and families of all ages.
Great, wonderful, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Seriously incredible, and maybe just one, one other comment. I, I had the, obviously, the opportunity to spend a little time with Kevin, and obviously I know Tom pretty well, and most of you guys, actually. And I'm blown away with the success of the program. I didn't realize how long it had been for one. And it is part of the fabric of our community. And I think we don't spend enough time on this board, probably, talking about those things that are important to the fabric of our community. And I, it's a powerful, I think, lesson for all of us to be thinking about here, and how maybe we leverage it and expand it and market it, help you guys. So I guess, spinning this back to a question, but, you know, what help can the town give you guys? What, what are some things that you guys are already thinking about that, that maybe we can, we can offer some help, suggestions, support, whatever? And, and even if it's the town website, I don't, I don't know, but.
I think the first thing is, is step one is engagement and, and being open to us and who we are. I think that's step one, which is seems like occurring right now. And then I would ask you to really think about different programs in town that, that may be able to support us, or ways that you think that the town of Madison can support us. We work with the school system on a daily basis, all of our, one thing about our scholars which is amazing, and they're the most courageous people, at least children in this town, because imagine those that have children or have older children, can you imagine putting your, your eighth grade child, making a decision to make a commitment to a town away from your home? So you got to think about it, think of where that parent's coming from. That's a, that's a choice, like I said, I don't want to go as far as desperation, but.
Scary.
And so these are tremendously courageous young men. And so I would ask, you know, what programs do we have in town? What are the things that we're doing in town? And really to advance that outreach, you know, we do have a very large advisory committee. And certainly we'll ask if we need, but, you know, we're always, you know, the door's always open at ABC. So I guess I kind of cut it back to you, Scott, and saying, you know, how can you help, how can you help us? Because, you know, we are, some of the concerns that I have just as Board President is, Kate mentioned, we are, we have a relationship with National. National has been steering away, which is why we're seeing community school programs really fail. And, you know, we are not at, at a point of failure, but if I look out a couple of years, I do worry about, you know, our ability to sustain this program. And I don't want to see Madison being one of those programs that doesn't make it. So that, that's, so basically, that's what brings us here today, to make sure that, that there's a commitment from this community to continue to maintain and sustain this program. It, it's such a rich and valuable program that it really is priceless. And, and I think that step one is just letting people know who we are, because that's the one thing I run into in my time on the Board, President of the Board, is that you start talking to folks in the community, they don't really, there's a very little understanding of what we are. So we have responsibility to really advance and market our.
Especially the younger fans.
Yeah, yeah. But I appreciate Scott, your conversations, our conversations, and Peggy as well.
Kevin, I have a small idea to answer Scott's question. I think one thing we could do, those of us sitting up at this table, is to help give the program some more visibility to a wider Madison audience. I think the, the high school folks, parents and kids know about it, but there's a whole segment in this community that doesn't. I was thinking about a small idea of perhaps once a year, having our ABC students come to a selectment meeting and be introduced to the community.
Yeah. It's a great idea.
And that might be a good experience for them, but it would be a way to reach a much wider audience, remind everybody about the merits of this program.
I think that'd be great, Al, because, you know, one of the things that, even when I talk to the boys, and we, you know, I'm not going to talk about any personal, but there, you know, there's this general concern about, does the community care about us? Do they care about us? And that, that's a hard answer, you know, obviously from, from my standpoint, of course we care about you. But, you know, when they're going, you know, trickling back and forth to the school, you know, I'm not going to pretend that there aren't things that occur in the school system, outside of the school system, in people's homes, they've been exposed to. And it's hurtful to them, and it's also a, honestly, a reality check for everybody in this room, that this is a constant growth process in that, you know, really everyone's got to check themselves on the grade. Because anybody who believes in diversity, who believes in the importance of supporting people who are disadvantaged, we're here. And like I said, 100% of your proceeds go directly to these young men. And, you know, whether it's Vassar this year for our senior Hanley, and who was, came to his program. And um, you know, whether it's Vassar this year for our senior Hanley and who was, came to this program, never heard of fencing, or at least never had an awareness of fencing, joined as a freshman and is a champion level fencer, which he is now gonna be fencing Vassar.
That's awesome.
There's no way that happens, you know, uh, if he remains where he was. And, and, you know, year before, our, our, our senior year before is at Rutgers University. Um, you know, we have a student at DC, which is your host family. So, you know, we're placing them in these great schools and really with the goal of ultimately, this is how I look at it, is creating future leaders who have established relationships, you know, that, you know, maybe wouldn't have been available to start bridging some of the gaps that we are struggling with as a nation. And my feeling has always been, everything starts at the community level, right? If you have concerns, start right here in your own backyard because there are at any given time, five or six boys that you can help. And that's a lifetime of help, uh, because who knows what these young men are going to achieve in their future? And to me, it's, it's really boundless, uh, especially given the, uh, the resources this town provides. And I'll go as far as, you know, internships, right? So it doesn't even end at the high school level. What about our graduating, is, uh, our graduating seniors? Internship availability, there's a lot of finance people, a lot of people in all, have all different businesses that can support and provide opportunities, you know, to continue to advance their, um, education. And again, to, to really provide this leadership, I think it's a leadership void in our country personally. And uh, I think it's a little better to start in your own backyard.
Al, long ago when you were first selected, you did invite us in and like presented to the board.
It was brilliant idea. I was gonna suggest a bike sale, but.
I remember that bike sale.
Here's the fire. Now it's fire. Well, I think, and Kevin, that was very well said, I don't think any of us could have said it better. About the values of the program and the values of the community to all lots benefiting from the program. So I think that, and we will continue the conversation, look forward to inviting, you know, maybe we do it with the new scholars coming in, you know, the team in September, you know, welcoming them to the beginning of their new, obviously the ones that are there as well, but just in having an opportunity to, to meet the board and also recognize that we as community leaders are excited and proud that they're here with us. So that's my, my opinion.
Follow their Facebook page. If you're on Facebook, because bike sale's coming up and they're taking me to say hi at.
Yeah, yeah. I, I have likes.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you. So, all right, so um, our next agenda item, I was just wondering, um, Jeanne's Angela? Is that under different names? So um, the next item on our agenda is.
Thanks, yes.
Maybe, yeah. To discuss with the Economic Development Commission, their commission goals and objectives. And uh, they have a newly elected chair, Andrew White Noel is in the UK right now. He said he would make sure, it was very late for him, he was gonna attend this, and that's why I was just surprised, I texted him. And I'm wondering if he's under some other name? Um, if Andrew is on here, raise your hand, because we're not recognizing. And I don't see any other, uh, were they aware it was on tonight's agenda?
Probably were.
Unless he had linked issues. Yeah.
Well, I, for the sake of time, maybe we, um, we can, for the moment, if he puts his hand up, we can always come back to it, but we.
Yeah, why don't we do that? So we're gonna table the uh, commission goals and objectives. I know Aaron is on here, but um, and then the next item is actually, and if you can bring up Aaron, um, this specifically relates to something that they had recommended to us, so we'll move on to item number nine. Um, and that is discuss a, a recommendation from the Economic Development Commission to approve an application from Saltwater Property Group LLC and Saltwater Property Group II LLC under the Town of Madison Tax Incentive Assessment Deferral Program from assessment to referral in one more than five years. Um, so this is a application that the town received. This relates to a tax incentive policy that had been passed by the board's selectmen four years ago and then uh, it was kind of updated a little bit a year after that. Um, and then we've had two successful applicants that did get tax deferrals approved. Um, and now this is a third application. Um, and so the EDC, I know you've got in your packet, they had strongly recommended that we would approve this and move it forward. The process tonight is discussion only, and then the next time we would vote, it would then, the process would be go to Board of Finance and then it would go to town meeting. Um, so I don't know, is Erin? She's coming up, okay, right, she can maybe just spend a second, giving a brief overview of the project. Erin, are you, you're still hanging on?
Hi, I, I think you could probably hear me, I'm driving in New Haven, I'm sorry, I didn't expect to be.
So um, maybe just give a two second about the project. Um, and, cause I, I guess the EDC is not attending for, and it couldn't be just because we had a bad life and everything, there might have been some confusion. But uh, you know, and, and be safe, but uh.
So roughly, um, this was a, a project that, um, as part of the ordinances, it does require that, um, they've received all their municipal approvals through the regulatory boards, um, which has been done. Um, the project was unanimously approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, and actually has a regulated activity permit as well from inland wetlands. Um, it's basically a three-story, um, commercial office building, um, that is, um, infilling in the vacant, well, it's not a vacant. Um, there are two non-conforming residential structures on the property now that will be demolished. Um, it's uh, directly south of, um, the former Moxie and the, the Como Mango Restaurant. Um, and this will be, uh, for an existing Madison, uh, uh, wealth management company, um, to relocate, um, and, and build, uh, and expand their business. Um, so I, I think as, as you mentioned, um, the letter from EDC really does nicely summarize the benefits of, of the um, development here. Um, it is a commercial, uh, use in our downtown village district, uh, really nicely, I think, infills, um, that, um, uh, the streetscape as well. Um, it was done, uh, in accordance with all of our design districts for the design, uh, for the village district. Um, so I'll leave it at that if you have any specific questions.
Okay, um, well, and I think just, um, a comment, I know that, um, the criteria that's actually listed in the policy is pretty basic. It just says anything that's gonna add over 20,000 dollars. So one of the conversations I've had with, uh, uh, the EDC chair is, um, just to ensure that we have some better guidelines about what type of applications we're receiving. There's a lot of discussion, Jenny, we're having work, but I know, uh, Bruce, you recall about what is this program for? What are we trying to use it for? What are we trying to incentivize? Um, so I think they did a great job in laying out like why they approved this, even though there's no criteria requiring that. They were trying to kind of lay out, these are all the things that are benefiting the town by, by, um, approving this for the deferral program. Um, cause I think, uh, uh, my concern still remains, the actual, uh, program itself is very limited in terms of criteria. So if you kind of open yourself up to all kinds of applications, right? This is the first one we received in two years. Um, but, um, so I think part of the discussion with the EDC was gonna be, you know, do we wanna look at trying to put a little bit more criteria into the policy moving forward?
To open it up.
Yeah, well, to make it more defined about what we're trying to accomplish with the policy. I think that's it, because right now, I think they did have more criteria before, but it was very, it was like job creation criteria. It wasn't really talking about development in general, what people wanna see in the community. And I think part of this is also, and when the EDC, we do have the conversation about goals, is we have the strategic plan, right? And we had a lot of conversations about what we wanna see for economic development in town. And so trying to line those two up and make sure that this policy aligns with that. Um, and so I think that mindset was there when they went through this to make the recommendation. Um, so in general, I think I'm supportive of it, um, because I do feel like it fits with all the things that we, um, we're hoping to achieve with this. So I don't know, are there other board members' thoughts?
I, I mean, at, at first glance, it looks like it, it really is a good project for this. Um, I think that, um, the endorsement from the EDC is an important one because they've, they've put it through that filter.
Probably have more detailed conversations about it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I, you know, on the face of it, it's gonna improve the grant list. It's going to bring activity, um, to the downtown area. It's gonna bring jobs to the downtown area. It seems like it's, it's a worthy candidate for consideration.
Is the amount of the, uh, benefit described in one of these documents? I think the policy structures it based on the project.
Right, yeah, there's.
So there are financial brackets.
Yeah. Based on the estimated value of the project. So, um, it does put forward that and, um, and then it would lay out, you know, what the tax benefits, the cost would be to the town. And maybe in our next meeting, we can kind of review that in more detail, spend some time. Um, and, and then we could also, and it'll be considered an action item in the meeting, but then the EDC, maybe we can make sure that they're here too to talk a little bit about the objectives and stuff. Um, so, um, you know, I think this, uh, I think it's worthy to continue the conversation and certainly have it at our next meeting um, as an action item. Uh, and then we'll go from there, okay? And I know, like I said, I think Andrew is in the UK, so he was stretching it during the evening, I think, but it seemed to work with the, uh, schedule and so with the technology problems tonight, he's, you know, I'm sure, the next agenda, yeah, okay?
Good.
Yeah. Um, all right, well, great, we will move on then from that, knowing that will be coming back to us as an action item at our next meeting. Um, okay, you good, Aaron? Thank you for hanging on.
Thanks.
Okay, be safe. All right, and then, um, moving on to our next, uh, uh, agenda item is an update from the Ad-Hoc Academy Community Center Building Committee. And I apologize that you referred it on the agenda, but knowing that somebody was coming from the UK, I wanted to give them their first crack. Um, so I wanna welcome to a balance time, who's the chair of the Academy, uh, Community Center Building Committee? Um, and then I know you might, you have other, if you wanna introduce who else is here from the committee and if there's people online that we should be, uh, introducing, um.
There's a, I will, I use the.
Yeah, 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 you do. Yep. And.
I like to use corporations. I'm used to standing up and presenting, sitting down presenting is not the, not the way.
Yeah, no, yeah, and um, and Jeanne, you know, move up as a panelist?
They're not accepted.
Okay, maybe they don't wanna be on. That's okay.
Tom, yeah, Tom and Mark, yes, they, they should, uh, in case they need to actually say anything and either support or not support. They, uh, they should be able to, uh, to do that.
Oh, that is weird with the, the cameras.
You and you.
There's so many.
You have a lot of you.
You wanna take a vote or? I'll say something.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's better. Um, yeah. Um, well, I, I'm here because we are going to give a, the committee, had been working for about eighteen months, uh, about two years after, uh, the referendum was done in, in twenty twenty-two, I guess it was. That's, yeah, and, um, we're, we haven't been here in front of the board and we've been working diligently behind the scenes in public, at the public meetings, but not, not at this level. And, uh, uh, the Tom or Carrie, who is out there, is the, uh, primary architect, uh, for, for the project. And Mark Skalenka, Colliers is the, uh, the head of, uh, the, the owners, owners project manager. So we have, uh, uh, those two on, on, anybody else on the, on there, Jeanne?
Yeah, and on most of the board is here.
Okay. We have, like, Joe, uh, Joe, who just about, sure, sure everybody knows, and, and AJ Miller. Uh, he's kind of new to, he's newer to, to this, to the town, but we're, as I'm, our board. And Sir Bill Stableford, who preceded me on the Academy Advisory Committee, we owe you a debt.
This is your show, pal.
Yeah, but you were, you were, you were a good, uh, good lead in. Um, this is an opportune time to give a, a, an update because we are, we're, we're at sort of a, a juncture of, uh, where we have to, deciding where we have to go with the design of the academy. And, um, I have, uh, slides that should be able to go over that, so if you give me the next slide, Jeanne? As I, okay, good. Uh, the referendum was, uh, two years ago, uh, our committee was formed in July, so, uh, we, we've been at this about eighteen months. Uh, we did hire Colliers as the owner project manager and, and Q and M, uh, as the architect. Uh, they, we, these are the two entities that did most of the work prior to, uh, the referendum. Uh, they were selected not just because they did the prior work and they did good work, but because they had some of the best ideas and the best talent, uh, available to us, at a, at a price that, uh, that we were able to, to handle. Um, the, there are three levels of estimates that are done before you can, you know, go to, before you can go up for bid. Uh, the first is a schematic design, that is a fairly, um, uh, simple, simplified method of looking at the total, the total of, uh, build out, what the cost of the building would be. That we, that was completed in, uh, August of, uh, twenty twenty-three. The design development is the second phase, that's a more detail. Actually, there are two different, uh, independent estimates that are done, uh, then they're reconciled. That was just completed in January of twenty twenty-four. And we received the results of those just a, a, uh, about a week or two ago. Uh, what we hope is that, uh, we can get a path that will get us to a general contact, a general contractor, uh, bid, uh, by the fall of this year. Uh, construction started near the end of this year with completion somewhere at the, where the end of twenty twenty-five uh, and maybe, uh, an occupancy shortly thereafter in twenty twenty-six. This is a, uh, this is behind what the schedule, uh, was when we started, but it is the, uh, it, it, it reflects our position right now. We can go next slide, Jeanne, next slide? Yeah, okay. There, there are, um, we could give the third one too, okay? Uh, there are three different, uh, scenario options for the, where we go from here with the design of the building. The first is the, um, is essentially, uh, the build out of the, the design that was approved in the referendum. And it's, uh, constrained by the current budget. We've been working on that design probably up until just a few weeks ago. Uh, we thought that, uh, we were, we would be able to stay within the current budget and, and build a building that, build a, a, a center, community center that more or less agree with or was, uh, reflective of the, uh, what was presented at the, the, uh, uh, at the referendum. Um, with the, the estimates that we got with, after the, the, the DD, the, the design documents, um, uh, we have, we have to actually go one of two ways, uh, which is scenario two or scenario three. Uh, the first one we actually chose to try to build out was scenario three was the full build out of, of the building. In other words, everything that was in the referendum, at least the vision that was in the referendum, we would build out and we'd have to determine what that would cost. Uh, the second is a, actually it uses a slightly different methodology. But what we would have to do is look at, how much could we build for fifteen point nine million dollars, which is the, the overall budget? Uh, and we'd start with zero and you say, what are you gonna, what, what comes first, what comes second, what comes third? When you get to fifteen million, for fifteen point nine million, you have to stop and you say, that's, that's all you get for fifteen, fifteen thousand. We actually have a meeting tomorrow, the building committee meets tomorrow, tomorrow evening. And we're gonna take up that, uh, that very, uh, that very topic from scenario two. Although I am prepared to talk about scenario three to, uh, today. So you'll be able to see a little bit of what we're doing. Jeanne, thank you. The first thing you get when you look at the, uh, when you look at some of these drawings, is this is a big building. Uh, you can see the, now you know how tall Academy is, I'm sure you've been by it. If you, if you just, how long, the length compared to the, to the height, it's a big building. Uh, it's about fifty thousand square feet. Uh, that's a lot of, uh, a lot of area. Um, the lower one is the front of the building, uh, which faces what we call the front of the building, which faces, uh, this, the, um, post road. If you're standing on the post road, you look in, that's what, that's what you see, that has the red doors on it. And, uh, that's nineteen twenty-one was the building and then, then some of the larger parts, which are to the right, is nineteen thirty-six. So it's not just a large building, it's an older building. And it, it has its own quirks and it has its own challenges. Um, you go to the next, next page? One of the things that's hard to see from here, but if you're at Academy, you don't even notice it maybe when you're at Academy. The, the main floor of the building is not a grade. The main floor of the building is about half a floor up, which also means that the, the lower level is about half a floor down. Consequently, every entrance to that building, when the kids were there for schools, requires steps one way or the other. So that's a challenge for ADA compliance, it's also a challenge for anybody who is challenged, physically challenged. Now, when you, you have a bunch of, you know, the first, second, and third graders, that's maybe not as much of an issue, but when at a community center, you're going to get a different audience, a different clientele, and that accessibility does become a, become an issue, and it's an important issue. The, there are two different designs that we're going to be talking about to, to actually try to handle that particular problem and provide us a building that we're, that we could be proud of. If you look at this, this drawing, what you can see is that there's a, a glass column in the center, sort of the center, on the left side, left of center. And in that glass column is an elevator, which is at grade. That allows the, anyone, anyone who's a family to come in and take an elevator to any of the levels. Yep, there it is, thank you, Bill. And it also, but it also allows, there's stairs, so anybody who is in a hurry, they can always go up the stairs. But it is, it is a very, it's a solution to a problem that is, is, you know, came from the building. The building said, you know, we, we need to get, we need to get people in, and in order to do that, for ADA compliance, we're going to need some, an elevator in addition to the stairs that have been there for, for a long time.
And this is kind of what was the original design?
This is the original.
The optimal design.
Right, correct. You also, there in the lower right, see the, sort of the back of the building, the face of the ball fields, those are the windows that have been broken consistently, until the, until that big, I think they, they have a big backstop now that stops the foul balls. Of course, it doesn't stop anybody from throwing a rock at it when the building's been empty, but that's the, that's the building, end of the building that faces north. I'll take questions anytime if you want, but I'm used to that, but okay, I'll just, the next one now, there's a, there's an important, let's see, this is the lower level. There's, there's a second quirk to the building, and that is, if you, in the lower right, you see two cross-checked areas. Those areas are not developed, as a matter of fact, they're filled with dirt. They, there, there was a third area, there's a third area, that is the corridor, right where the elevator is near the top, that's also filled, and there's a wall there. So the front, the left half, from the way we're looking at it, the left hand of the, the side of the building was not connected to the right side of the building. So again, a, a compliance issue, getting people up and down for all the of all the, for all the places that they need to go, and for both, both anybody who's challenged, anybody who's carrying anything heavy, by the way. Maybe that, and all of that would be served by the elevator, which you can see at the, it's at the top of this, and sort of in the center. The, by, by installing the elevator where we are, it actually, the excavation actually opens up that corridor and shown open here, not, not filled. So that actually connects the front half, the left half, the left side of the building with the right side, in a way that it's going to serve by the elevator. The, the left side of the, on the, on the left of that, there's the, well, that's, well, that's the cafeteria, it was the cafeteria. As a personal, my kids went to school there, they ate in that cafeteria, I remember meeting them down there in that cafeteria, because there were some offices down there that, where Miss Quinette went.
Not your kids, right?
Not mine. My wife's kids. The those two things have a, a level of complexity in the building that is solved by the elevator there, but that's, there's a, there will be a, there, there's a but coming up, but that'll be a little later.
Blocked right now, yeah.
Next, next slide, Jeannie? This is the first floor plan. Again, what, what you, what you see on the right is the, is the gym, that's a big gym, this is a big part of the, the building. You see, if you can see the crosshair, the crosses, with the, with the squares or the rectangles, I guess, on the, painted on it, those are the pickleball courts, by the way. So we'll, we will have additional room for pickleball, which will have to be shared with basketball, which is there. And I'll get back to the stage, if you remember, for those of you into Academy, the, the stage is there, it's a, it's a big stage. And we're, we're going to have to talk about that.
This is the stage, right?
You see, it's a large, it's a large piece of the building. But you also see, if you look sort of from, again, where we are, down from the elevator, there's a big, it's a best, called the vestibule, it's called the lounge. It's, it, you know, looks, because the building is so big, that looks like, you know, it's not a closet. That's, I believe that's about fifteen by thirty or something, yes, like I said, it's, it's between twelve and fifteen hundred square feet, it's a big piece of property. And that is, that's, that's where communities resides for a community center. It's a, it's, as you enter the building, it's designed to be a cafe, if we could, a lounge, sofas, food, food. We're, it's, we're open to different, different uses for that, but that is a big space that takes you, welcomes you when you get in the building. You also look, if you turn up towards the gym, that's a, it's a short walk from the, from where you're, a short distance from where the, the entrance is to the gym. So we've, we've looked at this, we've been looking at this for a long time, and the more we look at it, the design looks better and better. It looks like it accomplishes a lot of the things that you want to see in a, in a community center. The, the, the second, probably the, the largest piece of the, of that building is on the left, and that's the old library. I don't know, we're calling that a meeting hall or a, that is a, again, a place for small, small events, small concerts. Large, large, larger meetings, and if you look on, above and below that, there are two classrooms, so the old classrooms, and they're going to be open to that, with sliders and sliders. So that is, that'll be a big space for larger, larger events.
Dressing rooms.
Dressing rooms, no, they're, they look small there, but those are, those classrooms are, I don't know.
Like award ceremonies.
Yeah, so you could open up and have a chalcedon, right, on the sides?
Right, yes.
Or, or different things on those sides where
Right.
the, the sightline to the, because the stage is going to be lowered, so it'll be a low stage, but it'll still be, it'll be small.
The stage is small, but the area is going to, it's a, it's a big piece of the building, and again, the, the building's so large, those little boxes, they don't do it justice. By the way, this is a, this is a tour of the building that we, you know, the, those of us who worked on it, we go, we're, we're, we look at these every day, we're familiar with all the parts of it, and again, my kids went to school there, the, my wife actually taught there for a while. So, you know, we're, we're familiar with all this, but we wanted to give you a feeling for what, what it, maybe what it was and what it could, what it could be. You go to the next. This is the original design entrance, that is, again, as you can see, it's at grade, and I won't belabor that, and if you go to the next, this is where, as I said, we are going to come back to. This is a, it's a less costly idea, it is a viable idea, but it lose, but you lose some of what we talked about earlier. The, it doesn't quite open, it doesn't quite open to the vestib, to the vestibule, because the elevator is now inside where the vestibule is. The, and you are confronted, on the only entrance, on the main entrance, you're confronted by stairs, and you can see there's a ramp to the side. So either, either way, it's a, you're confronted with a, a challenge to get up the stairs. The other thing, if you go back a slide, Jeannie, another slide. What I forgot to mention is for those of you who've been inside the building, there's a courtyard, it's open now, I have a picture of it later, right there, that's going to be filled in. And if we can, we're going to try to get some artificial, or get some natural light down there, and, and it's open to various floors of the building. But that, that is the, the large space that I was talking about, that's just not any space, that's where the courtyard is now, could be, it, it could be open to, to bring natural light in, if we can, and it you'll be able to view it from the other floors of the building, we're able to actually look down on the ceiling.
Joe, I think it's worth pointing out, there's already been some value engineering done, even on this design, over what was originally presented. So the committee is, has really done its due diligence to try to get even the original design as, as close to the budget as we could. There are some cool elements that we would have to, we had to lose, but, you know, money is money, so we.
The original design had glass on both sides, which was just, and also.
Yeah, cause story light.
Yes, so, and those were very, very much nice to have, but they went out very quickly in our process.
Yeah. Go back, you can go ahead, a couple more?
One of the things I'd like to know, because I was looking at the building from the from the John Deacon House over the summer, and on the outside of the gym, there's actually the two theater masks, the comedy and drama masks in, in, in brick, carved into the brick. So this was that part of the building that was the addition, that is, the basketball court was always meant to also have that theater stage up there. That's why that stage is so prominent, is because that was part of the design for the high school at the time, to have a full theater in the gym, so.
And if you look at the, the backside, if you ever run the backside of the gym, now, you know, where the, towards the Madison Youth and Family Services, there's a, there's a steel beam sticks out, and there's a hole in the bricks there. That was for lifting heavy, heavy items onto the stage, so it was, it was an opening, so you didn't have to take the large items from the, into the, through the building to get into the stage. So that's another, that's a quirk, we, we, I hope you can hold that, hold on to that. You want to hold that, go to which, which, where are you, are you? Okay, I believe you're on the upper level, I can't read it from here, I can read it online. Second, second floor plan, yes, that's, so you actually need to go to that metric to, need to hold that, or is that the top floor?
That's the top floor, that's the top.
That's the top floor, second floor. This, the upper floor is going to be the home of Madison Youth and Family Services. If you look on the, what is, what is the south side of the building, that's, that is all offices, and then they have more offices on the other side, which are for more, I believe that's for consultation patients, more than, than general offices. They, they, they are also adjacent to larger spaces, should they need the larger spaces, they will, these are all open spaces that are, would be scheduled and, and occupied and, and scheduled by the, the feature rec. But it, it's a, it's a dramatic upgrade for the, for Madison Youth and Family Services. They have a small building, it's very cramped, not a lot of privacy, and this is a, this is an ability to move to a, a, an area where they could get, again, more privacy and more space and, and help and and help the people who, who are coming in and out to, to at least be able to do it with some level of privacy. Again, you'll notice that the, the elevator comes in, and it's very, it's adjacent to the, to the, to their, their offices, and their offices are a short walk around the other way. So the, anyone who's coming in can come right up the elevator and not go through the lobby. Not go through the lobby.
But the, there's also art space, the, the main space for artists has the most light, which is that main building, which, you know, there's a kiln closet, which that will probably be future. But there's, there's still a lot of community space up there as well, there's still the, yeah, there and above it, and all that area is all community space. And, and it is kind of the prime lighting space, that was thought to be that's where artists would be painting or creating, things like that. So that's, that's why that space was kind of cornered for that use.
I think we also, we should mention that parking rack is going to be. Be direct, sorry.
Amy Pollan's going to be.
It's going to be in the building, the first floor.
Yeah, right, so, and I think they're adjacent to the, to the entrance, so they'll be able to monitor people entering the building. There are many other entrances and exits to the building, and that's, that'll be something for Austin to, to have to deal with and have to handle that.
Good luck.
You go to the next one, Jeannie? The this is, this is not as big as I thought it was going to be once it's, once it's projected up there. I, I think we can get, we have handouts for the for the board. There's a green line there, if you can, if you can see it, there are three, three columns, and then there's a difference column, it's a, the yellow says the variance between the first and third columns. That, that, therein lies why we're at a juncture point. The original construction, heavy construction costs were expected to be somewhere in the, somewhere around eight point five million dollars. The, all the estimates have brought it in about eleven, over eleven million dollars. So there's, there's almost a three, three million dollar, there's a three million dollar difference between those two, and there's a reason for that. When the building was first looked at by the architect and by Colliers, they believed that some of the infrastructure in the building could be, could be saved. That not all of the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing would be would be abandoned, that some of it could be, some portion of it could be reused. And that, that was reflected in the heavy, the percentage of heavy and light construction. That turned out to be a wrong assumption. The the consultant that looked at this, the, there, this Kohler, looked at it and said, this is a, almost a hundred-year-old building, you're going to want it to last another hundred years. All the mechanical, electric, and plumbing are going to have to be replaced. That put a, that put a significant additional cost to the building. We went through a number of months thinking that we could find things that we might be able to take out, scope that we, we might be able to take out, that would be able to compensate, or at least come close to compensating for that. Unfortunately, what we saw was we actually got more surprises based on some of the assumptions. One of the, one of the main ones, as a matter of fact, one that's not quite resolved yet, is the septic system. The assumption was we could use this existing septic system, it had served hundreds of kids every day, it should, should, should have, should have held up. It turns out that's, that, that is not true, the septic system has to be replaced. And that actually creates another problem. Turns out the best place for the leaching fields is right where the playground is. So if, if we go ahead with the plans as they are now, that will disrupt the playground in some way that is still undetermined, and Austin, I know you're, you're, you're going to have to help with that. The the, the leaching fields are way off to the side, and they sort of, I did bring a map of them, but they, they essentially go right up the side of the, of the, against the church. And that's where the, the best drainage is. The, of course, the, the good news of that part, not that there's much good news there, but is that the, the baseball fields are probably not a good place for the leaching fields, and that's where they were. So the base, it looks as though the two, the baseball fields will go untouched. And that's for another, another reason, is that as part of our ability to, or part of our effort to make up for that three million dollars, we did not include the geothermal as part of the design that we're, that we, that we're looking at. We felt that, that wasn't, wasn't as visible, although it was a, you know, it was a, it was proposed, was actually put in the budget specifically. But it, first of all, the, the, the cost escalated significantly from where it was. And there, there have been advances in the air to, air-to-air heat pumps that allow. Heat pumps that allow them to get, to be able to heat or to heat. At levels down to like minus ten or minus fifteen degrees Fahrenheit. So the, the benefits of the, of the geothermal were reduced and it was. The cost went up specifically for the well drilling. So we, we said that that was not something that we were gonna be able to hold, hold on to. The payback period turned out to be somewhere around, I, I, I've been trying to look this up, it was either like twenty or forty years. It was, it was an incredibly long payback, payback period for installing the geothermal. Primary, well, two reasons. One, the, the cost of digging the wells has increased and the. And the efficiency of the air to, air, air out heat pumps has, has been, has been improved.
And the demand for all parts have increased because so many people are going for it now.
I believe the town representatives have been saying the, the maintenance costs are more complex for the geothermal system. So there might, there might be some ongoing.
And, and it's, if this were a new building, it might, it might be still viable, but we're talking about putting, putting it into a hundred year old building. And in a, in a confined space with town properties all around it. It just didn't, it just wasn't gonna, it, it just did not have payback that we would have liked.
And there's a million dollar differential.
Right. So we saved a million there, but the septic system. Turns out, as a matter of fact, the, the septic system is still under review. Because it may be, not be just a category, the, the whole system, the system of, of buildings around in that area. Maybe work, but that's something that's, that's out of our hands at the moment, out, directly out of the hands. And it's being designed, so we're looking at designs with, in cooperation with the town.
Yeah, because it doesn't really make sense to just have a one building when there's literally three or four there that could be utilized as a group.
The, the fire codes require, are going to require a sprinkler system. Which was not something that was in the original design. That was another three hundred thousand dollar difference. The site improvements, which we thought would be in the, say, in about a hundred fifty thousand dollar range, turned out to be. Three hundred and seventy thousand and that's for very minimal site improvements, just pavers and, and some shrubbery and, and. Refurnishing, refurbishing some of the parking lot, not installing a new, a new parking lot. Bottom line, if you, if you go down to, to the, to the bottom, is that the. The anticipated building costs are gonna be fourteen million dollars in this last estimate. Compared to about twelve million that, that was originally budgeted. The. The total cost of the building would be right now, if we built, if we chose this option. Would be about seventeen, seventeen eight compared to fifteen point nine. It's about a two million dollar, two million dollar difference. So there, and, and there are, and there are still more issues to be resolved.
So I'm having trouble sorting the numbers out. The dark blue column was the original projection of fifteen nine.
Yes, fifteen nine. If you could see down to the blue line on the bottom, it says fifteen nine.
If you built that, if you moved forward with that building, what would the differential be?
If we, if we were held to the fifteen nine?
No, 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 if you were held to the design requirements.
Seventeen.
No, no, because that drops a lot of stuff out.
Yeah, it primarily drops the. That's, that's the main.
The other pieces that seem itemized have been kind of lumped together in, in the past two columns. So it's not that we're missing those items. They're incorporated in a larger number in the other columns.
Except the ones that are missing. Some of, I mean, some of them that, that show negative are real subtractions from the project.
Like the missing ones, so for instance, I just saw, because I can't speak very well.
So site work is now this dollar versus these individual items. Do you know what I'm saying? So this site work doesn't necessarily, there, there's some site improvement and things like that, but all of the site work. That is here is this one number. So the seventy five fifty, they're just kind of, that's three, three hundred and seventy thousand.
But seventy five fifty, forty five and twenty five doesn't equal three seventy.
Correct. There's, that's the point. There's more, there's more needed here and there, that's, that's, this is. There's a differential between the ten million and the fourteen million.
Site work, for example, is because of the septic, right?
Right.
You're now having to redesign, have leaching fields elsewhere.
No, sanitary and sewer, where it's originally sixty five thousand for just kind of tweaks, now it's. Two hundred and fifty three thousand, quarter of a million.
So is the fifteen nine, the fif, is the, is the project that we. Were looking at in the original referendum at fifteen nine, is that same project today eighteen two?
Yes, it's, it's close. There, and there's potential adds on to that because we, we haven't even. Looked at the stage or theater, the larger theater, and we're just gonna do that as an add-on if, so that we can raise funds for it privately.
Okay, because what, yeah, so what I'm trying to do is say, the fifteen nine back then is really what?
It's not, it's not even eighteen two. Remember I told you there was, there was a separate entrance design? That entrance design would have a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings. And so that is.
So it's eighteen seven.
Yeah.
Eighteen eight, about, it, close to eighteen eight.
That, again, that is, that is the, that's the current estimate. That's not, we don't have a G C yet.
Sure, I get that. I, I get that, that we're working with, you know, numbers with lots of zeros on them, not. No, we're not counting out to the pace, right? We've got point zero or point six, but.
So if you took this number and added in the geothermal, which is almost a million.
Yep.
That would align to about that eighteen eight, which we were talking about. So we, we, we are deducting. Half a million dollars for, as an alternate design. So we're, that's a, that would be a cost savings if we brought the elevator in. And did the ramp and the stairs in the front. We took that out in this, but then we also took out the geothermal. So if you keep the original design, add back in the geothermal, you'll get to that eighteen eight. Approximately. And you're talking, that's construction dollars. And there is a couple of, there's maybe, maybe a million. That were unanticipated, but you're looking at two and a half million dollars just on the build outs.
So in, in. A sixteen million project back then is really closer to twenty today. I mean, there's, I mean, I'm, I'm baking in, I'm baking in some extra slop, because it's, by these numbers, it's really. It's really nineteen.
What's the point of doing that? The point is things change, like the designs change. They're saying now the design they're recommending, my understanding, what you're saying is two million dollars over not four.
Well.
Because, because they had the value engineer and changed some things and I'm assuming.
But yeah, so I hear, I hear Joe saying there's still some unknowns that could, that could add.
I just don't think we can pair up the apples, I guess.
It, it gives us, they're benchmarks for us to talk about what the two is.
Right.
It, it's, that, that's the utility of it is, is if we were to, if we were to say, we are the original thing. That's, that's the constraint. The dollars aren't the constraint. The budget moves closer to twenty million.
Yeah.
Right.
And then we talk about some of the value engineering that pulls it back down.
Right. So the, the thing I like about this piece up here is very succinct. Heavy renovation, light renovation, core and things like that. If you look at the end. The differential from the referendum to what is here is three point four million.
Right, okay, so that's, so that's the number.
And then we tried to, we're, 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 we're trying to engineer that down as much as possible so that we know. You know, we know that we, we're under a tight budget and we.
But not, but not compromising the spirit of what we want to deliver to the town.
And one of the things I asked the, both Tom and, and Mark, Colliers and Q A M. Is how confident are you of this number that we gave? We, we picked and chose from various, various pieces and we added them together. Does that give us a whole building? And both of them said yes. That the, this, the, the number that you see at the seventeen, seventeen eight. Or if you wanted to build the whole thing out at eighteen point, or eighteen point seven or eighteen point eight. Would, we would be able to build that. And I did look back against all of our past. We've had like four or five different. Estimators work on this and, and I looked back on what they, what they did and, and the number of, of total construction escalated. That's what the estimators get. That's what an outside estimator would get. Each of them was between, all of them were between about fourteen and fifteen million dollars. And we're, we're assuming fourteen million of construction costs. And we've been, that's been consistent from like the very, very first estimate we had. Yes, the estimate was.
So I have a really silly question.
Oh, great. I'll, I'll give you a silly answer, but.
I remember a big effort to save a building on Wall Street. In a, in a renovation. And ultimately, the decision was, it is better for the project. To tear it down and recreate the frontage. You know what I'm talking about.
That would be the Grand Library. Or you mean the historic building?
No, the, the hull building. Hull building. The original plans were to incorporate that in the expansion and then reality set in. And it, and it, and it wasn't gonna work and the, the, the best way forward was tear it down and then. To, to pretty, do, do a really good job of recreating the frontage on it. Would that ever make sense here? Would we be, would we ever be better off just tearing it down, avoiding all of the renovation? And starting from the ground up, recreating.
I can opine on that. I would just say that what we're seeing market trend wise, and Mark can confirm this. Is for public buildings, we're seeing, just for the building portion, bids coming in, new construction. Somewhere between five hundred and five hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. Which would put a similar building at twenty five million. You'd also have to have costs for demo and abatement of the building. Plus the site work. So at the end of the day, I think magnitude of cost for a new building is. Twenty eight, twenty nine million versus eighteen, nineteen million. So I, I, I think there's about a ten million dollar swing for the same size building and the same size amenities.
I can also, I'm, I'm sorry, I can just add to that. The, the savings would be in the square footage. If you didn't need a building that was fifty five thousand square feet. To deliver what the town of Madison would be looking for from a community center, maybe you would have a conversation about savings. But if we were gonna keep the same square footage, Tom's a hundred percent right. That it would be significantly more expensive and, and Bill Stableford, if you're in the room. You were on the original minute, well, you've been involved with this since day one. We looked at a new building option. And I'm trying to find the actual budget that we had delivered for that back in the day. But it was significantly more expensive for a new building than a renovation. If I find it during this portion of the presentation, I'll, I'll share it with you.
I'd say it was a smart question.
Mark brings up a point, that's, that's, you'd have to program a small building. And also I have to say, we could do in. X percentage of square feet, what, what the town needs.
But I think it's also the spirit of this was also preservation, right? And, and the beauty of the building itself lends itself to a lot of the activities that are gonna be in the building. So this was also saving something that had historic, you know, nature and, and that, a lot of the passion was around the history of the building. In addition to what people wanted, right, from the community center. So it's a fair question. Because you have to go through that make versus buy analysis all the time to figure out.
There's another, there's another value here that, that we, doesn't show up on this page. And that's the Madison Youth and Family Services are going to have, they're gonna leave the building they're in and they're gonna come to this building. So there, there's a significant, you know, movement from uptown offices that get a bigger offices, better offices. That has value, but then of course the building there is left on the other side. What do you, what, what are you gonna do with that? Does that have value? And all those would contribute to say, make this a, do this building, move with Madison Youth and Family Services. Get the historic preservation and to get the, and get the space you need. For, for not just the community center, but the, the Madison Youth and Family Services.
And then I would also highlight, I don't know if you still, the grant, the grant that we got, the four million dollar grant and the. Hopefulness we have for the federal grant, which, you know, we're still hearing is, has a real chance of getting passed in March.
Well, that'd be eight million dollars we'd be risking.
So that's a great segue into a real conversation, which is, at the end of the day. We are, we have a ceiling in our budget. But can we create a pathway that doesn't ask for the taxpayers to fund out of their dollars? Additional dollars. But increase the overall budget. I mean, I think that's, this is, this is where we're headed to is, this was a great plan until we got punched in the face, right? What do they say?
And, and we knew about it. We just, we thought we could overcome it with other things farther outside of that. But we got punched in the face again and again and again by the sewer system, sewer system and all that.
And just to swing in a different perspective, I watched their last two hour and nineteen minute meeting and prepared. And I remember Tom saying if we were to move forward with this project with the current budget of fifteen point nine. And if we did all of our mechanicals or structurals, everything else, we'd be left with two million dollars to renovate. A portion of the building for offices and.
That's what we're gonna do tomorrow. Tomorrow, we're gonna say, okay, for fifteen point nine, this is what we're gonna be able to deliver.
Right.
We're gonna start with, you know, we've gotta do the mechanicals and tighten the thing and, you know, the roof and things like that and make sure that the building is safe.
Yeah. And then in relation to the grants that we're receiving, then if we wanted to keep those grants, Youth and Family would really have to be. Right. The portion that was renovated.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And then what do we have left?
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's one of the things we're gonna be sharpening our pencils with tomorrow.
We're getting to a win, we're getting, you're getting to a win-win situation. If we could, if there's that pathway. Then the town can budget or can bond less than sixteen, the fifteen point nine million. And the building could be built to the original, original vision for the, with the balance of the two million.
The challenge is we don't know, right? It's March.
So Joe, the irony here, since referendum, we've learned two things. The price of the building has gone up, but the cost to the taxpayers has potentially gone down.
And can I ask just one question? One thing I know we haven't covered is like the soil and groundwater. Is that incorporated into these prices or is that one of the unknowns? Because I know there were some results of testing.
Well, the, Erin was, I don't know if she can be able to, but she's on, on next.
Okay.
And that is gonna, that's. For, that she's going to be talking about.
Okay, but do we, are those numbers of any potential remediations included in what we're seeing here or that's part of the unknown?
I think we have some, some remediation planned for this, for the, for some of the areas. Erin will be able to talk better than that, because there, there's some underground tanks that have to be, they talked about pressure, monitored and maybe fresh replaced.
Yeah.
But again, that's.
Okay.
But the numbers, I think comparative to what we're talking about are fairly small, if I remember correctly.
Is there energy tanks or sewage tanks?
They were.
That were not.
Like encapsulated.
Encapsulated and then started, so then you just have to, you have to test out and see how deep in. I mean, it, it seems like.
I mean, it it seems like we're kind of, we're at, as you said, the inflection point here, right? We have to make a path. And one path is gonna require us to go out and get permission from the public to allow us to spend more on the project, but not necessarily bond more, we might actually be bonding less because of the grants, right? So the money that we paid for by the grants. Because right now, just to remind everybody, the way the bonding resolution went is every grant we get deducts away from the amount of bonding. So it's a net against bonding rather than going towards more spending. And so that's what had been approved. We would need to go back to the public and say, can we spend more and bond for less, basically? Uh or yeah, well, bond up to fifteen point nine million, but we wouldn't need fifteen point nine million.
And then the grants would be.
Right. On top. The grants would be covering the supplemental cost rather than going against the bonding, right? So we would have to ask the public permission to do that. We would go through a referendum process to do that. There's no way to, you know, the budget, I think disparities are too big for any way to supplement. Uh unlike the school project, we could shift through projects, shift around, but this was a separate vote. And we can't shift pro things, we were allowed to do that with school project, we can't do it here. So there's that path. Or it's you got your budget, do what you can, and then whatever you can't do, we'll probably end up in CIP, right? And that that sounds like the analysis of what you're doing now, a little bit to understand what can we get for fifteen point nine million? What's left out of that um and how that would be funded over a period of time through donations, through CIP and things like that. Um so those are kind of the two.
I so I think for us to really have good conversations about it, you know, we've got the the expense side of it. Now we need to have the the funding side of a conversation as well, and and I'm sure you guys don't.
Not quite the expense, we've got to verify, because if you're gonna look at the number, let's look at the number.
We would need a really targeted, before we even go to a referendum, obviously, it would have to be.
These are the things.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm I'm saying that, you know, we need to do to to talk about all of these different funding mechanisms. There's the bonding portion, there's the grant portion.
And the grants would be noted at that point.
There may be rebate portions um that, uh you know, like we did with the town um system. So we need both sides of those conversations before we can start even imagining a path forward that we can take to the public. And and so what I what I would like, my big ask is that that there is a, you know, the original referendum number with the assumptions and then right next to it. Those same assumptions with today's costs, that that eighteen nineteen million, whatever whatever that number is. And then all the value engineering can happen in the columns, you know, after it, but it it gives the the benchmark. This is if 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 we gave you what you asked for back then, this is what it would cost today. Here are suggestions for opportunities to 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 save some money.
I think that's important for the public to see all of those phases of discussion.
Bruce, you're right on with the finances. My question is, um to what degree, if at all, is the undesignated fund balance available for projects like this?
Uh referendum.
But aren't those already dollars that the taxpayers have paid?
But they need to approve their spending.
So that kind of spending would have to go to referendum.
It it it's exactly, it's because of the way the resolution was done, which is typical for all of them. When it's voted on, this is this project is now got a scope that was approved by the public and the funding source is the bonding less grants.
Right.
So you have to look for things outside of the scope. And there are a few things, I would say, you could argue the septic, for example, was not contemplated in the original referendum. And we had this conversation when we talked about the, you know, addition of classrooms, right? Done after the referendum happened. But that's only part of the gap, there's so many, the the rest of the stuff, the construction assets or just things, those aren't new. Everybody knew you had to do new electrical or whatever, you know, there's um. So I think it would be very difficult, you could maybe take knock off one or two things that were really truly out of the blue after the referendum passed to try to fund out of that. But I don't think you're gonna close that gap.
No, so it would be included as a funding mechanism in in a referendum question. We're gonna do the the fifteen nine in bonding, we're gonna do X in undesignated fund balance, we're gonna do Y in grants and and other things.
The portion from the undesignated fund balance you can convey to the public, those are dollars that are already spent by the taxpayers and are available.
Yeah.
And that's a wise use of.
But but I guess I see the way I look at this, so we don't even need to go there. Because the reality is we authorize, the the town is comfortable authorizing up to fifteen point nine million dollars in bond. If we get two four million dollar grants, right?
Right.
Right now, we're having to net them off the fourteen point nine million. If we could just apply the grant money to to cover the budget deficit. You know, we still will be bonding for less than fifteen point nine million. So I don't even think we need to talk about other funding, I think it's more let us apply the grant money on top of the fifteen point nine million versus having to net it off, right? Um and not all of it even, right? We're talking three million and we have eight million in grants.
And it's a win-win.
So.
We hope.
I know, either that is a big part.
We need those numbers before we can have a really good.
And then where do we stand on the grant? Because that does change, I think, the conversation by the way, having an additional four million.
Right. Now, Bruce, maybe you, the board can give us a little guidance. There there are some of these value engineering things that I think our committee would were it were really painful for us to put in, right? And they were things that, yes, drop the cost, but sacrifice some of the spirit and and maybe some of the long-term thinking as well, right? We replace the entire park instead of just refinishing the one we have. Well, maybe the town then has to replace it a few years because it it broke apart, right? Like, was that a good use of those funds? So do you, is there some guidance that the board can give us? We're trying to provide which value engineering things we would recommend. Should we be thinking about everything, how do we describe that to you? Here are the ones that we think are no brainers, easy things. And here are the ones that are, wow, we could, but.
Well, I think that that is, and I think it's prioritizing, I think one of the big question marks is the entrance. That is a game changer for that building, in my view. So yes, you can value engineer it down and save five hundred thousand dollars, but what are you losing too much of the um uh the accessibility as well as the the beauty of the design?
Architectural elegance.
Let's not do another Daniel hand.
You know, but that's a conversation, I think.
So my response is, if we have potential grant funding that is well in excess of the deficit, I want the building we voted on a couple of years ago, period, with no compromises. That's 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 the answer. You know, and and until we know that we don't have that money, I don't wanna consider anything else.
Yeah, I think that's fair, the point about not wanting another Daniel hand, because, you know, again, I watched the meeting and I know one of the areas that they were. It was leechers versus chairs, it was electronic scoreboards, it was room dividers, you know, all those things that make the functionality of programming. And we haven't even addressed the stage, the main stage, I'm probably, the larger stage for actual productions and different events that could be. So that's, we hope to tackle that in rough estimate, um good, fine, done.
If you if you wanna, are there any more questions on this? As we, you know, we're getting to the end.
There's more.
Like that was enough.
I'll have to tell you, see that line down the center? I worked like an hour and a half trying to get rid of that. And it just wouldn't go. I didn't think it was there in the in the finished print, in the finished slide, but there it is.
Yeah.
Um the um uh our our committee's meeting tomorrow, as I mentioned earlier, we're we're gonna go through a a a process of of additive processes instead of subtractive. Uh Joan described it very well, we're gonna come to fifty-nine and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna close the meeting, I guess.
But but also talk about the next.
Yes. The the buildout of the chimps of the gym stage, uh I I don't, I'm not sure how we missed that, that there was we I I assumed that there would be light renovations or some renovations to the stage. Uh but there's no compliance, there's no uh no ADA compliance. Uh we need a, we need to as an ad, uh as an ad, uh get the uh a cost or or the stage in maybe even a, you know, first first cost and then a finished cost. Uh but we, that's something we need to do. Uh Bill Stableford, my good friend, um when he, as the advisory committee, if you look to his uh to to discern, they did. The the performance uh at the theatrical stage was was first or second on the, maybe second on the list.
The original, yeah, the original assumption, Joe, was that most of that would take place in in the auditorium, which currently the library was the library. And that that would be a fully outfitted stage with uh s- side areas for props and changing rooms and uh and permanent seating of up to two fifty.
Right, and and that cost was gonna be much greater.
That was the original.
Than what could potentially be done. It was a hundred and twenty-five seat originally in the referendum. And to the the height of the ceilings, the height of the stage, just to have it be a a theater, let's say, even similar to the cafeteria. Okay, that isn't at the at the high school. Um you know, all stages are raised and they're raised for a reason, and the one in this design is actually gonna be lowered for ADA compliance and to be able to have a small, you know, where you could get up on the stage and you could do a presentation of the budget site. Or, you know, and you could house a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty people and not necessarily take over a pulse in the auditorium to do it, or have a town meeting and you have a small stage, have a microphone up there. Um the design currently does not have any true theater lighting directed in it, it's just basic auditorium lighting at this point in time. Um so the the the, we do have a gem of a stage. I've I've been doing theater for over forty years and there's really the depth of breath, there's a drop floor in the main stage in the gym. There's um really wonderful design, you know, when when Joe and I were walking through, we first looked at the side of it, I'm like, okay, we could figure out, we could stretch it, you know, we start looking, then I walked into the gym, I went, oh my gosh, this is the stage type of thing. So if we really do wanna try to do this and say, this is a true museum, you know, I'd rather even have that be a phase two if we have to and really if 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 voters say, no, we need to keep this at a certain level and then privately raise funds to try to make that happen. Uh because I just really believe that it's it's just an amazing space. And it it's it's depth and it's breadth and the capability and the height and, like you said, things were flown, I mean, it it was designed originally and you can tell by the the exterior, it was designed as a theater. And that's why the funny thing is you were talking about the fold-out seats. Well, if we don't have the theater in that space, we don't need that, because you're not gonna have a fold-out seats for people playing basketball in the middle of there or anything else.
So that just got me thinking now, if the stage that's in what was the library is really not gonna be super functional for any kind of large-scale productions, is it really necessary? Because I saw, I did hear also that the cost was increased because of having to lower the stage to add in the accessible ramps and whatnot. Couldn't we just cut that stage out and focus those funds on the stage in the other area? I mean, if, I mean, do you want a stage to give your budget presentation?
So I would just say that that we're it's we're probably getting a little too deep in the details for this discussion.
That's what you guys are struggling with. I know, and it's a lot, it's a lot of those trade-offs, right?
And that and that's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna be doing.
Right.
We we do have to resolve the scope of this uh septic system, and that's not us alone. Uh that's gonna be a town-wide decision or to determine which, if any, of the buildings have a long-term future or they're gonna have part of a larger septic system for the whole uh for the whole area or individual septic systems. Um that that's something that has to be resolved. We also need to proceed with necessary permits and until we resolve some of the septic issues, we're not, we're not gonna get that as part of that process.
So the question I have is, um if the were decided to go and get approval from voters through a referendum. How far are you away from like nailing down what that number is? Because ideally, if we were to do that, you don't wanna then spend another six months after the ref, you wanna go out to bid. Like, okay, you got the approval from the voters to get them, spend the money and uh and, you know, how, what is the timeline for that? Because we've lost a lot of time already, you know, for various reasons. Um and the building's deteriorating and um and I think people really wanna see action soon. So do you have a sense of how far you would?
Well, what's what's the uh, what's the starting line? Is it, is it when we have our meeting tomorrow and we give you all the information you need? Or is it when the referendum is, whenever that's?
Well, then, my point more is to go to referendum, we need up up up, in my view, we need a hard number. And basically, this is it. You go out, the day after you get approval, you go to bid, right?
Okay, so that means we have to start the design document, the the construction documents before we have that.
How long, how long does that take?
Um huh, construction documents from from day one to to finish.
I think we have about three months scheduled. But I would interject and say the estimates that we have completed um to date are pretty darn good. We went through an exhaustive process, we've had two separate estimators look at a fairly detailed um scope of the project. Um so of the scope that we have dollars or, you know, numbers for, you know, I feel fairly confident that those numbers are are, you know, pretty darn good. It's the scope that we just don't know yet, the septic system, are we gonna do something extra with the stage? Um the pieces, you know, pulling all the pieces together. But I would like to think that, you know, within four weeks' time, um you know, barring going through the entire CD process and then getting estimates reconciled again, um I would say you could have a pretty good number in about four weeks.
That's helpful to know.
But you still have to do the the construction drawings before you have to bid, would that be correct?
Of course, we would have to do that, and then there'll be another cost reconciliation process, just like we did at the DD phase. Um there may be some V, you know, VE work at that point as well. But um the scope is really getting fine-tuned and the numbers are getting better and better as we get there, so.
I think maybe the harder thing is the grant side. I think they're closer to having firm numbers than we are to having firm grant numbers.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah. No, there's a lot of unknowns, we're just, we're getting a lot of unknowns, I'm trying to get an idea that, you know, um. Yeah. Yeah, we could have, we don't, yeah, we could have a referendum, it makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, but there's.
We don't rush the referendum and then we wanna have it the ready. And if we go to, and so I think it's important to see, but if people aren't gonna vote for the building that we all wanted, um and they uh don't support it, then Plan B is sticking to the fifteen point nine million dollars. It's not that the project's not gonna happen, it's just a much smaller project, basic renovations, um and then put the other stuff in the CIP.
Yeah, our our the the last bullet there is, is that that's our immediate goal. We wanna be able to get to the point where we can begin the creation of the construction documents. That starts the cascading process of getting the uh getting the big building built. Drawings to to contracting, to construction, to opening.
So that's a problem, we need that. We can't go to construction document until we have a design that we're satisfied with.
Yeah, you need the budget, you you need to know what the the budget is.
And and you need to know what the budget is, they they go hand in hand.
Right, right.
Well, but I think the messaging you're hearing from the board, though, is there's support to go out to get additional uh approval from voters for the design that everybody wanted, right?
Yeah.
Uh we just don't, you know, um generally, that's what we've talked about tonight, right? Um and so that's where I think that, at least so you know that you can focus on that and refine that. But then we're also gonna have to have the alternative, because if it doesn't pass, we need to have a Plan B, right?
And then just to be clear for the listeners, when we say go out for additional approvals, we don't mean to bond more than the fifteen point nine that they originally approved. It just means to not cut the grants out of that fifteen point nine.
But but I mean, again, in the really simple math that we've done, the grant numbers are more than enough. To cover the excess and so the scope doesn't necessarily have to suffer. And to Peggy's point, we might be able to say, we want you to vote again for a bigger budget, but we want to reduce the amount of bonding we're asking for. Right, so.
So I I heard spend more, bond for less, T-shirt.
And I'd like to buy a vowel out.
If you if you flip to the next, I had I had a slide for questions. I guess I didn't have to, I didn't need this slide.
I want to show you, that's the stage, the middle, that's the stage.
That's the stage in the in the in the small. And and the gym stage is the one above. And the kitchen, I thought the kitchen was an interesting one, too. That's the kitchen. And if you go in, and just in case this wasn't enough, if you if you wanted more questions, you could you could hit the next slide.
I I I will say that I think it might be worse the board doing another tour of the building. Because I did it four years ago. You probably never toured.
No, I did.
But it just might be help with all this to really do another tour, you know, in the next couple of weeks to refresh. And and understand what we're talking about now. And now we have actually plans to understand better. Because when I toured it, it was all just kind of, you know, well, we may do this here or this would be, you know, this would be a much more detailed discussion, so.
To the to the next slide. That's the.
Courtyard.
Courtyard area, the way it looks now. That'll be filled in and it's open to the sky right now. There's a way we can get that open to the natural light. That's a that's a win win. And the to the right is the play yard, the playground that that will have. The current septic system design, that will have to be modified in some way.
Relocate, basically, right?
Next, next slide, I I did want to take, I did want to take this opportunity to thank the members of the committee. We've been doing a year and a half of hard work. We're probably gonna have another year or so left. And Kelly, which.
It was wait and see what number he said.
AJ's here, Joe Berdizo, he travels a lot, Dave Spurley's been a great vice chair, Joan, as always. And I don't want to forget Elaine Davis, who was for the first year or so was was with us, so see, I listed her as a meritist. And 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 of course Bill, I mean, you know, you we're walking on, we're walking up the mountain that you that you showed us, so.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. We appreciate it. I know this has been a tough one. I think it's been a tough one in town since two thousand and four. So you're the fifteenth Academy Committee, but there is a light at the end of the tunnel and we'll get there. So thanks for your hard work and we'll be hearing from you again.
Yes, very soon.
So with that, then, I guess, hang on for a second. Item number eleven. I'm just wondering, is this something we have to talk about tonight that's site assessment? I don't know if Erin's still on this. Can we? She's still here. We can spend a second on it, I guess. Erin, I know you've probably been waiting patiently.
Hi. I know. Can you hear me?
Yeah, so this is, obviously, we're getting late here, but as you. But can you explain this environmental site assessment and recommendations? And I think we have questions on, are they on?
That was, that was my question for Jeanie. Organize this to be on the agenda this evening.
Okay, you're sounding a little distorted, but it looks like we did get somebody from.
I mean, I can be fairly brief. I don't know how much you're looking for an update.
So.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can. You were cutting out and it looks like.
Hello.
Jeanie, who is and.
Melissa Nork from Fussin O'Neill, if you can hear me.
Okay, great. So it would be great if you could just give us a quick overview of. The groundwater evaluation.
Okay, so we conducted a phase two environmental site assessment, which consisted of. Going and installing some soil borings to test some areas of concern that had a potential for release. If you looked through the report, there were two main areas. One talked about some superficial soils in front of the building to be managed during redevelopment. And the other, that is the primary focus of the proposal, was a historical heating oil tank that was removed. There was some heating oil that had been released and excavated out, impacted soils. During our investigation, we put a soil boring there and there was evidence of residual impacts still in place. We collected a groundwater grab sample out of the soil boring, which came back with concentrations of. Petroleum constituents above groundwater protection criteria. So the groundwater protection criteria is meant to protect areas of high quality groundwater. That may be used for drinking supply. And that raised concerns with a potential for a significant environmental health condition. As you're aware, this area is supplied or is has public water available. But our proposal is to confirm. That all of the houses in the surrounding area are indeed connected to public water and that. We would go back and confirm this detection just to have a better understanding, which would. Involve installing a permanent groundwater monitoring well as opposed to the initial sample that was taken out of an open borehole.
And so I guess then you're looking for the town then to. To for us to recommend to do the next.
Yes, pretty much. Can you hear me now, Peggy?
Yes, I can, yeah.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. And I've been working, you know, a lot of this assessment has, or all of this assessment so far is funded through a DECD grant. Brownfield Assessment Grant, in which we are able to amend our budget to include this additional scope of assessment. And and I've I've had a meeting with DECD to do that and followed up actually with Kathleen Payne. At Fuss, who's the project manager in an email today. I guess one of the questions we had, Melissa, is that can you tell us how long you would need to monitor the groundwater for?
So that would be dependent on the initial results and if there are private supply wells within a five hundred foot radius. So if we go out there and do this initial event and. The concentrations are below criteria, then that would be it. It'd just be something to keep an eye on during project, the redevelopment project. If there is a detection above criteria with the permanent ground monitor well. And there are wells in the area. There would be ongoing monitoring until the condition was below criteria, which would also include sampling any private wells in the area. On the most likely a quarterly basis.
Okay, so the initial, this next phase is roughly about a one to two month window of of testing. To give us. A more definitive path, I guess, of of how, if we need to continue monitoring for the longer term.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so I I guess to the board, our. The the course of action, I guess, that I was advised through DECD would be that I provide this information to DECD. The the additional scope of services, they'll amend the budget and once we get the okay from them. That they're going to fund this remaining. I think it's it's roughly twenty one thousand dollars. We're well under budget for our our award. We have a two hundred thousand dollar assessment award and we've only used roughly twenty thousand dollars now. So I I don't foresee any problems with this. I would just say that if, once we confirm with DECD that they'll fund it. That we'd be able to move forward as quickly as possible with this next phase.
Do it, yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I think you have our support to to move forward. Okay, great. Thank you, Erin. Sorry for the late night.
Thank you, Melissa, for joining us.
Okay, all right, so that was, that's the last Academy. I know. Unfortunately, we were not as kind to the Madison Little League, because we have you, so only I didn't realize there were gonna be representatives here, so. Item number twelve is discuss and take action to accept a donation from Madison Little League in the amount of thirty six thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. For the Nelson Field Lighting Project pending for the plan.
Here's gratitude.
Austin, if you want to introduce and.
Please, yeah.
And talk about the 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 donation we're excited about. And I'm sorry you got caught up in this meeting, but every.
Joined by Chris Boynton from Madison Little League. Their donation will, you know, contribute to this project of lining the two Nelson Ballfields at Surf Club. You know, a very generous donation on behalf of, you know, Madison Little League families. Both present and future. So, you know, we're excited and thankful for their support in moving this project along. And just thanks to the whole Madison Little League Board and families in town for getting on board with this project and helping us.
Terrific.
Been a long time coming.
Yeah, we're we're excited and I I know you guys spent a lot of time last year going through the CIP. Process to get approval for the project and then we partnered up with Little League on this using ARPA funds. So we're grateful to see the project move forward. So thank you for the donation.
Yeah, thank you guys for all the assistance in making this happen and also it's been a great project manager for us. So we appreciate the town's resources and being able to get this finished on.
Yeah, this will be exciting. So I guess with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, well, thank you for the donation. And then item number thirteen is discuss and take action to award a contract for the Nelson Field Lighting Project to Moscow Sports Lighting. In the amount of two hundred and thirty six thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars funded through ARPA and existing beach and rec budget. And to authorize the first level of sign all contracts and documents associated with this.
Salute.
Okay, and this is basically the full project cost now. Most of it is ARPA. There was a little bit of money that Austin.
Yeah, so.
Was able to apply to some of the, well, you explained.
Yeah, thanks. So the project, yeah, funded through ARPA and the donations through Madison Little League. So this two hundred and thirty six thousand is the lights from Moscow. The conduit, which my department will do on on our own. And the engineering costs associated with the entire project. The remaining project budget, which is the electrical work, those bids are due back. The twelfth. So once we know that money, what that dollar amount is, Little League will be doing this again. To to fund that portion of the project as well.
What's the timeline, Austin?
We hope to have the lights on, you know, shortly after opening day.
So.
Terrific.
Also.
All right, well, with that, then, I guess, all in favor, say aye. All right, great. We're the full scene of the project and thank you for hanging on. Meeting.
Say thank you to Little League.
Absolutely.
Item number fourteen is discuss feedback from the public information session on the Gargoyle Point Improvement Project. We had a public information session. We had a number of people show up and give some important, I think, thoughts. I think one of the things that was mentioned and we asked them to look into is adding that additional staircase back for the Oak Beach. And that was something where this is the right time to do it that had been washed away a couple of years ago. So that was good. We got some additional feedback and I think we'll try to get questions answered from one of the residents today about. I had written down these, but I think a lot of the stuff that he was talking about was discussed in terms of the site.
Yeah, line of sight, the railings was specifically discussed that we didn't need. That we, well, we didn't need them, so. There was a reason. They had a very specific answer to that.
And I remember I asked, not at the public information session, but at one prior about the temperature.
Concrete treatment.
Of the concrete. They said there was some sort of treatment.
Yes, I heard the same thing.
That they can put on there. Yeah, just so for the public's benefit, this was on two different, more slanted agendas also this project. So by the time I went to public information session and gone through our review several times, so we asked a lot of questions in those other meetings. I did think it was a good question, though, about. Well, the cyclines, I I believe we had talked about, but. The drainage issues, do are we at risk of any runoff into the sound? And I know that's a concern of our Shellfish Commission because they are seeding.
Deep, I think, with that careful.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it was, it was the decking drain. I I think that's just an engineering problem to solve.
Yeah, so I think, you know, with all the permitting that's involved in this project. It wouldn't move forward if those issues were not addressed and. The scientists who was at our public information session addressed those concerns. And I've reached out to our engineering firm with the questions that Mr. Schmaltz had and I'll get some. Detailed answers and contact him. Almost everything he asked was addressed at the public information session last week as well.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So I think that, you know, with that, adding, you know, they want scope change, they'd be adding the stairs if the the budget allows. Then I think we'll comfortable proceeding.
The back stairs you're talking about. Yeah, I love that idea.
All right, citizens comments. Do we have any hands raised, Jeanie? Has anybody hung on? Okay. State your name, Jim.
I, it's Jim Schwalz again.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you for looking into that and look forward to the answers on it. The comment on this one was, it was really disappointed and a little upset about the reaction. To the bids for Academy. I think you guys need to go back and look at the referendum that we voted on. And watch the presentations that you did. The referendum was for fifteen nine. Minus the interest bonding phase, permits, all of that. So that's already down because interest has gone up. And then you sold us that we would never spend near the fifteen nine because you were getting for eight. Million dollars in grants. So it's, you can't just say. Hey, we're spending fifteen nine now. That's what you guys said we were gonna do when you told us that we weren't gonna be spending anywhere near that. And if you can't deliver the referendum with the features that you sold. It's not, well, let's just move forward and build this out over time. You've got fifty million in CIP for school improvements over the next ten years. And then if you go in from now, we're gonna spend what we were thought was gonna be eight or nine million. Now you want us to spend sixteen million. Plus possibly for twenty plus million dollar community center. And then, you know, there's environmental concerns now. You've got to really. Take into consideration that this project may not move forward. It may not be a viable project. And just because you guys are all laughing and happy about it, the town doesn't necessarily all want to pay that. You've got to be realistic on on what your goals are and what you're spending.
So I appreciate your comments. Tonight was a preliminary discussion about how to move forward. Any additional, we're gonna have to get voter approval for it. Any additional spending on the project and tonight was a discussion of options, but thank you for your comments.
Yeah, but you've also are trying to say that, you know, we agreed to spend fifteen nine. We didn't. We agreed to spend. We agreed to spend fifteen nine minus the grants, now you're looking back, if you're going to want to respend, can you let me finish?
So I think we're, thank you for your comments, I don't, it's normally not a back and forth, but I do want to make one comment for the record, we did not know that we were going to get four million, potentially eight million dollars in grants. We hoped to get grants, I never anticipated getting four million dollar grant, we were hoping to get a couple million dollars in grants. It was never anticipated to be getting four million dollars from the state. So we didn't have this grant, we had no grants in place when we went out to the public, but we said we were going to work really hard to get grants. We've been super successful, more successful than we thought.
So then you want us to pay you for getting those grants and just respend that money?
Apply those grants to the project for additional spending without getting voter approval, so nothing's going to happen without voter approval. But with that, thank you for your comments. Are there any more hands raised, Jean?
One other quick thing?
We'll have to move on, please. Any other hands raised from the public? Nope? And with that, thank you very much and I guess you're no objection. So, thank you.